Okay, mine's right under the 18. Okay, go back out.
Just because, I don't know, he's been like off the radar lately.
Oh, is that really?
Think probably it worked better if they were there.
Okay, it's loading.
Good evening, folks, and welcome. For those of you who don't know, I'm Auburn Mayor Jason Levesque, and I'm delighted to welcome you all to this very important evening. We've got a great announcement to make tonight, and I'm here to talk to you about Auburn's upcoming Seska Centennial Celebration. For those of you who do not know Latin, I believe that is Latin, that's our 150th birthday. It's kind of, it's nice to be up here right now, because I grew up, some of the stories of my grandfather, who was Abe Lincoln at five foot seven inches tall during Auburn's Centennial Celebration. So I think there was definitely a drought of Troy Barneys out there in Auburn at the time. So I know he spoke fondly of it. I know a lot of people have spoken very fondly about that celebration over the years, and I'm really looking forward to celebrating our 150th anniversary with everybody in the city of Auburn, and frankly, everybody in New England. For 150 years, our beautiful city has grown and flourished and thrived. And it's because of this that we stand upon a solid foundation of heritage, history, and honor. Plans for this celebration have been in development now for several months. I've been working closely with our very talented staff and with a group of dedicated community volunteers to help and develop a one-of-a-kind celebration that's going to showcase everything that's great about Auburn in our history and in the future. I'd like to give a special thank you to the staff who have put in countless hours, probably dare to say hundreds of hours, planning this point up to this right now. So for their above and beyond work, thank you very much. Our community-based organization, our steering committee, of very active and very knowledgeable and thoughtful citizens that have come out for uncountless untold hours just to get us here, and we haven't even started the celebrations yet. But proper planning is going to prevent very, very poor performance. So I'm looking forward to the outcome in 2019. With that said, I'd like to introduce your city manager, Peter Creighton, who has a few remarks to say, and then we're going to move on to the grand unveiling.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm pleased to be able to make comments as a city manager. I worked for the city of Lewiston many years ago, back in 1987. I was in graduate school, the University of Maine at Orno, and I started with the city of Lewiston in 1989. I was there until 99. And I always enjoyed being in Lewiston, Auburn. Then I went to Cumberland County. I was in Cumberland County for 18 years, and I had this opportunity to come back here to go to work for the city of Auburn, and I saw that as a great opportunity. People asked me, "Why would you do that?" I said, "Well, I feel like I'm going back home to a place that I'd been and spent a number of years and enjoyed being in this community." This community has a lot going for it. I think that this 150-year celebration is a very special event. The city of Auburn has great natural resources, as you all know, with Taylor Pond and with Mount Appetite and also with Andes Gogon River and Lake Auburn, and many opportunities that people have to be able to enjoy the parks that we have in the city of Auburn. City of Auburn, I think, is poised to be able to move ahead. I've said to the mayor and said to the members of the council and staff that we have the opportunity to be one of the best small cities in America. But what does that mean? I've written about that. I think what that means to me is to have a highly effective city government, to have a mayor and city council that is working positively to try and move the city forward, to have a business community that is engaged and is working to try and improve and move the city forward, and to have citizens that are engaged, and to have a quality education system. We have a new high school that will be built in 2023, and we all have goals of trying to move the city forward. We have this unique opportunity with this new high school of being able to have one of the best high schools in the state of Maine. And with everything that is happening, what an opportunity now to celebrate the 150th anniversary for the great city of Auburn. So I'm very pleased to be able to be here, and I want to thank the staff who've helped, as the mayor said, enormously in putting the event on tonight. We have a great team who are working on 150th anniversary, and we have a very dedicated staff as a city government. So it's a great pleasure to be able to be here. I'm going to turn the microphone back over to the mayor. I think we have an unveiling that we're going to be doing here soon. Is that correct? About 45 seconds, okay.
And, okay, maybe about 60 seconds. I've got two very special guests with us this evening, Mr. Troy Barneys and Allison Casares. If you could come up here, like I like to do every once in a while, let's embarrass people. So I'm going to start off with you first, Allison. You're the 2018 Auburn Business Association Citizen of the Year. Shall I just come right about back here? If you could, please. Friends and peers, describe her as peaceful, enthusiastic, open-hearted, incredible, calm, warm, gentle, funny, smart, and on and on. I don't know if you can go on and on. That's pretty much all of the good adjectives. Allison works as a primary school teacher for RSU4 in Sabatys. She is known as a silent hero, always going above and beyond. She volunteers, she teaches, she tutors. She's active at Temple Shalom, serves on the board of the Lewiston Auburn Children's Foundation, and coordinated the Kid Zone at the Dempsey Challenge. Allison, welcome, and thank you for helping us today. And then there's Troy Barneys, a 2007 graduate from Edward Little High School, where he was the 2007 Maine Gatorade Player of the Year, Maine's Mr. Basketball. Troy continued playing basketball for the University of Maine at Orno, where he was a 2011 graduate. Troy has spent the past seven years playing basketball internationally in a European league, spending the past season with a team from Hungary that I can't pronounce, Ademiramo S.E. It's a long name, a lot of syllables, so it's got to be a good team. Got to be. But it's currently a free agent, kind of like me. We think it's so fitting to have these two exemplary Auburn residents here to help us with this reveal. And Troy and Allison, I'd like you to gently, like, put your hands around this ribbon. Don't touch it. Don't touch it yet, okay? And if everybody in the audience could help me count down, we're going to count down from 150? No. We're going to count down from five. So this, and before we do that, let me just give you a little background. Many months of planning and strategizing has gone into creating this new logo. And this is an important thing, because when you have a logo, it's a brand. It helps represent the brand of Auburn. And we know that it wasn't just me or the committee that could come up with this. We had to really draft the thought and the intelligence of everybody in the city. So we had countless conversations, mock drafts, back and forth, something that we feel the entire city can rally around and that best highlights our efforts as a city to move forward to the next 150 years. And this is the conclusion of that hard work. So if we can count down from five, four, three, two, one, pull it. So this will be our official city logo and brand for the next 24 months, and we've got hats. If you ask Liz at the front, very carefully, or very nicely, she might be able to give you one. So this will be our next, our new logo for the next probably around 18 to 24 months as we gear up and then celebrate our 150th anniversary. Now I'd like to move on. What does that mean? What does that mean for the city of Auburn? What does that mean for the region? What does that mean for New England and the thousands of people who are going to be traveling here from all over the Northeast to experience what we get to enjoy every single day? Let me give you a little bit of a preview on that. Take this off for a second. Old Army, I can't wear my hat indoors. So let me explain, a couple of events. First of all, we have four signature events that are going on in 2019. What better time to kick this off than New Year's Eve? And I'd like Lisa Toussaint and Allison Casares, if you could just stand up for a second. These two great residents of Auburn have agreed to be our co-chairs for New Year's Auburn. So thank you very much. I'll give you the overview, because it's their responsibility to get all the details done. Imagine downtown Main Street in Auburn blocked off from nine till one o'clock in the morning, live music, tents, ice sculptures, merriment, cheer, fireworks over the falls, and really celebrating everything that Auburn has to offer. Coming up here for a one-of-a-kind, and we believe first-of-its-kind activity in downtown Auburn, celebrating, you know, what is going to be a great year for its residents and future residents. Moving to our birthday party. Official birthday of the city of Auburn is February 22nd. Interestingly, Ms. Lisa Toussaint's birthday is February 22nd. Everything has a story. Everything kind of goes together. We'll be doing some pretty spectacular celebrations on that Friday, February 22nd, for the city of Auburn's birthday, as well as everybody else's, the residents' birthdays that fall on that day. And a very special, yet-to-be-announced celebratory gift to every new Auburn resident born on February 22nd, 2019, with a special bonus, yet to be announced, if they give their middle name of that child Auburn. So, blank Auburn, blank. We're still working out the kinks, but we do believe it's going to be spectacular. Moving into our Memorial Day Parade in May. Some of you might remember the great State of Maine Parade that was held in Lewiston and Auburn. We want to bring this back. We want to start off with a great celebration for Memorial Day 2019 in downtown Auburn, with a parade running from New Auburn down to Past Festival Plaza into Great Falls Plaza with representation from groups around the state. Hopefully, this will be a good way to showcase to the state of Maine and New England what Auburn has and really the changes in our city since the last time the state of Maine had their annual parade. Then kind of culminated, excuse me, ending, if you would, with our homecoming event. And as the city manager said, we're in a great time in our history of Auburn. We have 150 years of past to celebrate. We also have 150 and hopefully more years of future to celebrate. A linchpin in this will be the building of a new high school. And what better way to kick off the fundraising campaign for that high school and the public awareness, the public participation campaign, than to highlight everything that past Edward Little alumni have done over the past 150 years? Homecoming is a great way to do that. Battles against Lewiston, yet to be determined, healthy battles, safe ones. Football games that we will win. I'm making sure of that right now with Mayor Bouchard. And a lot of other great events. And really, to take homecoming, which has been a decent affair in the past, a couple steps up, and something that the rest of the state of Maine can look at and is like, "That's how you do homecoming." And frankly, that's how the rest of the cities in Maine are going to look at how they celebrate their anniversaries and their birthdays in the future about what we do here over the next 18 months. So with that said, we want you to participate. If you go to auburn150150.com, it's live right now. You can find information on the website. You can find information on our signature events, how we're going to enhance our other existing events, and how we're going to make 2019 the year of Auburn. You're also going to see ways in which you could procure and get great merchandise items to show your Auburn pride, volunteer and activities of your choosing in order to help, as well as to help being a sponsor, a participant. And fundraising is going to be key. It's going to be key to bringing this off. Obviously, it's going to be key to a lot of efforts. One of the greatest efforts, and we're going to be talking about this later on tonight in our workshop and city council meeting, is how do we bring our history and heritage to the forefront? One of the ways is by celebrating our past with the bells of St. Louis. And how do we get these honestly one-of-a-kind bells mounted for everyone to see and mounted prominently, not just in a basement someplace? One of the ways is by getting everybody involved in engraved bricks. That'll be part of our new Auburn Village plan, which will hopefully open in the fall of 2019, where every resident of Auburn, frankly, any resident of anywhere, can memorialize their name, the name of their children, the name of their ancestors that have come and gone before them, and help celebrate Auburn as a city and what that means to them as individuals, as families, as organizations. We'll be hearing more about that, but if you want more, you can always go to our website, auburn150.com, which is a great URL. We should probably keep that for a lot of years, maybe the next 150 years, yes. Auburn150again.com. So look for us on Facebook, look for us on Twitter, look for us on social media. Troy Barneys, I'm not sure if we officially told you, but is our social media ambassador for the next 18 months. I know he loves it because he has like 30,000 followers on Instagram. We're going to bring it on, okay? So with that said, any questions from the audience? Any questions at all about this celebration? This anniversary? None? Well, that's perfect then. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. We're going to reconvene at 5:30 for our normally scheduled workshop leading into our regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thought we're doing executive session, we're looking at.
Yeah, I know, I got the email saying you can pick it up. Can't do, you can't do this kind of stuff via email.
Now, y'all know you can't wear your hats in a meeting. Oh, you don't want me to tell anyone? Oh, we're on air now?
Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the workshop of July 2nd, 2018. The first item is an executive session to consult with legal counsel regarding the marijuana moratorium pursuant to one, MRS, section 405. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Counselor Zani. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Counselor Walker. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We'll now enter into executive session.
I declare counsel out of executive session. Next item is an executive session to consult with legal counsel regarding city-owned and tax-acquired property pursuant to one MRS, section 405, six E. Do I have a motion?
Some more.
Do I have a second?
Second you.
I have a motion for counsel Fornier, a second from counsel Hayes. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? None being? We will now enter executive session.[1026.39]
All right, Councilor Titus, want to take it?
Sure.
Okay. I declare Council out of executive session. Next on the list is renaming of Little Andrew Skoggan Park and a general update on the process and the project, especially how it works with our Seska Centennial planning celebrations. We've got about 10 minutes to go through this. We're running a little short in time, so what I'm going to ask is that we go through this right now with Brittany and myself. I'm going to lead this conversation. Larry Pelletier and Stephen Martelli. I should never forget your name. So we're going to come up here and give a presentation. We're not going to finish this presentation, unfortunately, due to the scheduled meeting at seven. This, we might continue after, or we might have to delay a vote on this concept. Let's get through what we can, and Sabrina, thank you for being a great support and presenting afterward on our meeting. So with that said, Brittany Myrick.
I don't even know how to get on.
Counsel, Mr. Manager. What I'd like to do here is take some time, and it's pretty important that we get through the first part of this tonight, and just go through what the updated New Auburn Village Plan looks like with the park, through some more recent architectural renditions, and then what the progress is that we're moving forward with in regards to fundraising and why. So I'd like to thank Brittany Myrick. She is a special assistant to the city manager, who's been really heading up a lot of this planning over the last 30 days now, 30 days. And honestly, I don't think we'd be here today without her assistance. Larry Pelletier is going to be representing the Bells of St. Louis Committee, who obviously is going to have a very vested interest in everything that's decided in this council. And then Stephen Martelli, who's representing the Seska Centennial Committee, who's also been very instrumental in getting us to this point, and obviously with the execution over the next 16 to 18 months. So first up on the screen, and in your packet tonight, there is, as you can probably see, and we've gone through this, the New Auburn Village Plan before, the green area, the greenway, if you would. And again, this is a rough, a rough drawing, artist rendition. There is still some finalization that needs to happen. That finalization can happen, and work can be planned based upon direction from the council. And I'll have Mr. Pelletier give an update in just a moment on that. But imagine, if you would, Little Andy Park, being enhanced, greatly expanded, leading out to the river and connecting the base of the bridge down up to Second Street, okay, as you can see through here. It generally runs through the contouring of the river, and there's going to be some major elements or themes to this park. If you look to the left, there is a concept plan for a location for the Bells of St. Louis to be mounted. And Mr. Pelletier, let me talk a little bit about the plans there and timeline.
The company that we decided to go with to do the architectural work, as far as the tower itself, is the Verdain Belt Company out of, a foundry out of, I believe they're based in Cincinnati, Ohio. They're originally from Alsace, France, and they're going to be celebrating their 175th anniversary pretty soon. They have ties to Maine, they come here on vacation and stuff, and we have a meeting scheduled with them this coming Monday at four o'clock.[214.34]
Quickly.
All right, Councilor Titus, want to take it?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. I declare Council out of executive session. Next on the list is renaming of Little Andy's Skoggin Park and a general update on the process and the project, especially how it works with our Seska Centennial planning celebrations. We've got about ten minutes to go through this. We're running a little short in time, so what I'm going to ask is that we go through this right now with Brittany and myself. I'm going to lead this conversation. Larry Pelletier and Stephen. Martelli. I should never forget your name. So we're going to come up here and give a presentation. We're not going to finish this presentation, unfortunately, due to the scheduled meeting at seven. This, we might continue after. We might have to delay a vote on this concept. Let's get through what we can, and Sabrina, thank you for being a great support and presenting afterward on our meeting. So with that said, Brittany Myrick.
I don't even know how to get on.
Counsel, Mr. Manager. What I'd like to do here is take some time, and it's pretty important that we get through the first part of this tonight, and just go through what the updated new Auburn Village plan looks like with the park, through some more recent architectural renditions, and then what the progress is that we're moving forward with in regards to fundraising and why. So I'd like to thank Brittany Myrick. She is a special assistant to the city manager, who's been really heading up a lot of this planning over the last thirty days now? Thirty days. And honestly, I don't think we'd be here today without her assistance. Larry Pelletier is going to be representing the Bells of St. Louis Committee, who obviously is going to have a very vested interest in everything that's decided in this council. And then Stephen Martelli, who's representing the Seska Centennial Committee, who's also been very instrumental in getting us to this point, and obviously with the execution over the next sixteen to eighteen months. So first up on the screen and in your packet tonight, there is, as you can probably see, and we've gone through this, the new Auburn Village Plan before, the green area, the greenway, if you would. And again, this is a rough, a rough drawing, artist rendition. There is still some finalization that needs to happen. That finalization can happen and work can be planned based upon direction from the council. And I'll have Mr. Pelletier give an update in just a moment on that. But imagine, if you would, Little Andy Park being enhanced, greatly expanded, leading out to the river and connecting the base of the bridge down up to Second Street, okay, as you can see through here. It generally runs through the contouring of the river, and there's going to be some major elements or themes to this park. If you look to the left, there is a concept plan for a location for the Bells of St. Louis to be mounted. And Mr. Pelletier, let me talk a little bit about the plans there and timeline.
The company that we decided to go with to do the architectural work as far as the tower itself is the Verdain Belt Company out of, a foundry out of, I believe they're based in Cincinnati, Ohio. They're originally from Alsace, France, and they're going to be celebrating their one-hundred-and-seventh fifth anniversary pretty soon. They have ties to Maine. They come here on vacation and stuff, and we have a meeting scheduled with them this coming Monday at four o'clock. It's going to be a conference call. So, and the only other thing I have to add is, I see this bell tower and the bells of St. Louis as a focal point for this entire project. I think once that is in place, everything will fall into place around it, and it's something we can be very proud of, this community.
Thank you, there. So the concept is, if you look at the walkways, to pave these rockways with commemorative bricks. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Myrick right now to explain what those bricks look like, get some guidance from the council, and then we'll talk about the financial applications.
Good evening, councilors. I'll try to keep it short. Basically, since I've started working here, I've taken on the special task of trying to find a way for the community to be able to leave their mark on the Seska Centennial. I think it's a pretty significant celebration, so I think that the community deserves an opportunity to leave their mark. And what I kind of found was that the best way to go about doing that was to offer personalized bricks to everyone that wants one. So I've spent quite a bit of time researching companies that sell personalized bricks, and what I discovered is That's My Brick is one of the best around. And there's a separate packet in front of you that has some more information on That's My Brick. They offer some of the lowest prices. They offer a lifetime guarantee, as well as a bunch of other services to help with a fundraising campaign. I use the word "fundraise" because we will be donating half the proceeds to the St. Louis Bells, which, as he mentioned, will also be memorialized in the park. Our goal is to sell 2,000 bricks, which, when you first hear the number, sounds like a lot, but that's less than nine percent of the current Auburn population, so it's really not that significant. With that many bricks, we will be able to get them at a wholesale cost of $17 and sell them to the community for $100, which is the recommended price point from That's My Brick. At this price point, we will be able to give the St. Louis Bells over $79,000 after costs. This is such a fantastic opportunity for all residents of Auburn to remember this anniversary, which is why it makes Anniversary Park an appropriate name for the park. Beyond current residents, it's also a great opportunity for companies, organizations, past people that have lived here, really anyone. There's tons of opportunities for this fundraiser. And after spending some time working with That's My Brick, they sent me some samples, and I would love to get your opinion on the colors. We would love to use your opinion as the final decision. And I really appreciate your time, and I'm going to hand it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. There's two, I think the top one is claret, and the bottom one is regimental red. So we will, as Mrs. Myrick just said, Ms. Myrick just said, your vote will be the deciding factor in which one we use. So, and we can just do that in a little straw vote, I think, at this point. Mister, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Martelli.
What are we talking about? The naming with the Seska Centennial. The naming of the park, we'd like to make it Anniversary Park. We would incorporate the Little Andy and the Denny Sullivan areas into that park. The reason why it would be a much...
The Sullivan area stays the same. Sorry to clarify. That's, that's, this is only off to the right, Second Avenue.
All right. And we'd like to be able to make this a very noticeable and recognizable area in our town, so that it also celebrates the 150 years that Auburn has been here, and that will last for another 150 years. So.
Good, good.
Could I ask a question? You had mentioned Anniversary Park, but here on this document, it says Auburn Anniversary Park.
Yeah, correctly, it would be Auburn Anniversary Park. Thank you. And you'll see in some of the information, we've left it blank on the fundraising. Let me talk a little bit about timing on this one. Timing on this is kind of important for a number of different reasons. Obviously, as we kick off our fundraising efforts, we have to be cognizant about how the fundraising efforts affect the entire strategy of the city, not just for our Seska Centennial celebration, but namely for the high school. The high school will be starting a capital campaign relatively shortly, and we've had extensive meetings with school department officials, administration, and Chairman Kendall to talk about coordination of fundraising efforts, primarily because we want to be able to build Auburn into a, you know, do our fundraising and help really elevate the conversation, elevate the name idea of Auburn, and then hand them off a nice baton pass from the Seska Centennial to every little fundraising. So without cannibalizing each other and without stepping on each other's efforts. Too many efforts can be a problem. One of the other reasons we wanted to bring in the Bells of St. Louis Committee on this is because we know that they would like to and have tried to raise money in the past. Well, if we can, you know, collaborate with Anniversary Park and raise money to help fund the celebration and the marketing efforts around that, as well as fund a really phenomenal park that can be a center for anniversary celebrations going forward for years, and that will be a place where future citizens can come and see the commemorative brick that's the name of their father or grandfather or uncle or aunt and so forth, or themselves. We think that's just a really fitting place, as well as a great way to combine efforts and get something that could be monumental and really be another landmark for Auburn, right? Along with the Onnings and Festival Plaza. So I think we're, you know, unbeknownst maybe to Auburn, but we have a thing going on, a great thing, with regards to really prominent visual effects in our, in our public space. And I think New Auburn deserves it, and I think Auburn deserves it. So we're trying to truncate the schedule, make sure everything runs smoothly, but also be respective of everybody else's efforts within the community going forward, not just now. So maybe a little bit more of a strategic way of thinking. So at that point, I'd like to open up to the council for any questions.
Thank you very much for that. We're talking about a lot of different things. We're talking about the bricks, we're talking about the bells and a bell tower and Anniversary Park. I don't, I would love to see an integrated presentation about what this whole thing would look like. You know, are we just agreeing tonight to change the name? We're not agreeing to sort of any of the other aspects of this? We're not agreeing on what the bricks look like? What are, what are we talking about?
Well, you're going to agree, we'd like a little straw vote on which brick, because we're at an impasse, and your opinion on the colorization of the brick's important. Okay, you're, but while you're, while you're making, later on, making a decision on just the name of the park, the fundraising efforts are being orchestrated by the Seska Centennial Committee, Seska Centennial Committee, as well as the Committee for the Bells of St. Louis. That's their joint fundraising efforts. So it doesn't need council approval on that. The layout of the brick, the walkways, that also all has to go through the appropriate planning. This is about as best as we can get, because they haven't taken that next step to actually the landscape architecture, nor do we realize what we can do with the bells. We do think that the Bells of St. Louis Committee, along with the Seska Centennial Committee, should come forth in the future with periodic updates, of course, to let you know what that overall look is. But right now, starting early is important, because we do have to get all those other components in place. You're absolutely right. We just don't have that data, those data points yet.
But if we start selling bricks on Monday, and the design doesn't incorporate the bricks...
The, oh, the design will incorporate the walkways. We just don't know exactly which meandering path the bricks will take. And also, if you look on the left, there is talk already at the last Bells of St. Louis Committee, as well as previous discussions on the new Auburn Village process, or project, about meeting spaces, statuary, the bells have been talked about now for how long, Larry? To be put there, over almost a year?
Longer than that.
Longer than that. So, and all these renditions have shown brick, paver, walkways throughout the park.
So just to be clear, we're, tonight, we're just doing a straw poll on the color of the brick that we want.
There's also an agenda item on renaming the park from Little Andy Park to Anniversary Park. The Little, the Little Andy stone and placard will stay. It will just be moved a little bit closer to the river. Councilor Walker has been involved in that, and, you know, his comments and direction, I think, along with the rest of the council, will be important on the relocation of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think timing is probably important, too, if we're looking at naming, renaming it Auburn Anniversary Park. With everything that's going to come forward in terms of communications and printings, you know, I would think that we would need to have that name settled first, and then...
If you look in your packet underneath the information about mybrick.com, you'll see, not a sample, but the ready-to-print fundraising information that's going out to 1,152 Auburn businesses, potentially on Thursday. That way, it'll arrive in the mailboxes post-holiday week, and it'll get people's full attention. It's important, as people start contributing to this effort, corporations at this point, to know what they're contributing for and understand what they're getting for their contributions. And we did lay that out to you. I also brought this out to council's attention, the previous meeting or the two before that, I can't remember exactly, to give you, to keep you all apprised of the process there. And the bricks will be for sale effective now. The website's live. We're collecting information, though I don't believe, Brittany, that the online credit card process is up yet. We are gathering the list, correct? Yes. So through form, Councilor Titus?
Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of comments. One of them, I've seen these bricks before, memorial bricks and so on. I'm a little nervous that it's a painted brick as opposed to being etched, and I'm nervous over time, twenty, ten, fifteen years from now, especially if it's a walkway, that it's not going to stand up.
So it's not actually painted, it's laser marked, it's actually black glass, which is stronger than the brick itself. It's been through all of the standard testings. It's the American Society for Testing Materials. It's gone through freeze, thaw cycling, salt spray exposure, sunlight exposure, and it's stood up to all those tests.
As long as we have some sort of guarantee that, if it's a ten-year warranty, we want this to last twenty, thirty.
There's a lifetime warranty on all the bricks.
And they'll redo any of them that are...
Yep, absolutely.
And then the other comment is, to your point about how many and planning board approval, I really think that before you set a number on the number of bricks, you've got to know where they're going to go, because if you sell too many bricks, now you're going to have areas that are not walkways, but they're sold bricks. You've got to put them somewhere, and that's just going to look funny.
Yeah, we, yeah, we had that.
To know where they're going and how many.
We had that same concept. So we talked, we worked extensively with planning on this and to look at, and with the company, My Brick, or That's My Brick, to see exactly, you know, what this would look like. So wasn't it, it's not an arbitrary number. They could actually need thousands more bricks in that area. So, I mean, that would be a great problem for us to have, to sell six to eight thousand bricks.
Oh, of course.
But so we're well within, like, under the number, if you would. And that will give, you know, the planning board and economic development, I think, some leeway with placement of the brick, and if it's brick, you know, commemorative brick, next to commemorative brick, or if there's spaces in between. There's one other thing, too, that we did not find, that we did ask, is what type of financial savings would this be for the city? Because all these bricks that we get, well, that's one less brick the city has to pay for. So there might be, it's hard to quantify at this point, but quantifiable in the future, cost savings for doing this as well, that we're just not looking at right now.
Thank you.
I looked at your bricks, and I liked the looks at both of them. I think that should be an option for us, because one has like a little map on it there and the other one doesn't. And I'm guessing that our names would go at the bottom where the company's name is.
So those were just examples. They personalized those for us. All three lines, you can put whatever you want. So there, there will, the brick comes blank, and then you can put a picture on it, you can put three lines of text, you can put one line of text, but only what you want on the brick will come on the brick. So there will be no That's My Brick, there will be no Auburn Maine. It's whatever you want to come on the brick. It's completely personalized.
Thank you. That's great.
There must be a minimal, a minimal or maximum, maximum number of letters. I mean, I'm assuming that the font will be the same for all of the bricks?
Yep.
And so I think it would be helpful for people to know you can have no more than so many letters.
Yep, absolutely. They spell that out very clearly on the order online, and then also in like the brochures that we would hand out as well. So it'll be very clear what you can, can have.
Is there any approval process for what people put on the bricks? Does anybody?
So all of the, I will see all of the orders, and I'm sure the people at That's My Brick also see them. So if we see something that isn't appropriate, we will definitely reach out to the person, see if they want to change it first, and then go from there.
And just, finally, as a picture, so we don't know how they'll be laid out. We don't know if they'll be side by side, one whole group, if they'll just be put around randomly.
Yeah, a lot of that's really going to depend upon the, some of the artist renditions of what the bell tower looks like, so that, and what the design features are there. So once we get kind of that element in place, plus the price, and we know that we can raise money towards it, then I think that will help solidify planning on what the layouts are going to look like, in consultation with obviously council and the New Auburn, United New Auburn's Association and so forth, so.
And just, I'm sorry, final question. Mr. Pelletier, so in terms of, will we, as a council, have a response, I wouldn't say necessarily input, but a response to what this bell tower looks like?
Will you have buy-in, what the tower would look like?
I'm just curious, what would our...
I don't know what the tower would look like. We have a general idea. We were shown several bell towers from this company and other companies as well, and we picked out a bell tower that could hold all four bells. And then we're thinking of putting that tower, after it's built, on a stone that the city of Auburn has a lot of cobblestones, and building a base to hold the tower. And then these stones that we're talking, these bricks that we're talking about would go around that.
Thanks, I appreciate it. My, my thought process is just that this is our chance to have an integrated new area in our community, and just to make sure that it happens in an integrated way.
I think that part of that, Councilor Lasagna, absolutely, and this is, these conversations that are happening early on, sixteen months before potential opening of this park or completion, I think, are important. And I think that the naming of it sets off a tone, the collaboration that's happening between different community groups here and city government is a model for, you know, a good thoughtful process to come forth, council input, let's make sure it fits Auburn and it's integrated. But like a lot of things, I think we've all seen before, the thoughtfulness, the integration, the long runway, doesn't necessarily happen in the big picture. So I think this really allows us some time to see what that end goal is. And I do think that we all probably agree that the end goal is a beautiful park that brings our community together and not just, you know, that's a transient-type park that people don't think about as they walk through or bring their dogs there to do their business, which I've seen lately. And I think this could actually bring this area alive, and, you know, along with obviously the development that's going to happen in that, in that village plan. So this is, I think, a really good start. I won't say a start, maybe the end of the beginning, the beginning of towards the end. That's the process we're in now, in order to get through and have something that's first-class, and reflects upon our history, our heritage, and our honor in the past and going forward.
Hey, we're, we're into our meeting already, meeting time, so I guess we should wrap it up and...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm going to tear, we are done workshop at this point. We're going to push, excuse me, push back Ms. Sabrina Best's presentation until a little bit later on this evening. Right now, I'm going to recess for five minutes, allow the council to take a slight break, and then we're going to reconvene for our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you. Bye, Miss Fox. Bye, Ms. Fox. Now, called the order, the meeting of July 2nd, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda is consent items, and there are currently no consent items on the agenda, so we're going to be moving on to the minutes of June 18, 2018. Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18 regular city council meeting.
I move, we accept the minutes of July, June 18, 2018.
July. I have a motion by Councilor Fornier and a second by Councilor Hayes. By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Obstained? Minutes are accepted. Next, communications. Chief Phil Crowell will provide an update on the marijuana moratorium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With me is Eric Cousins, Deputy Director for Economic Development. We just wanted to give you, in the public, a brief update on where we are with the marijuana moratorium. As you're aware, as you know, rather, June 18, that moratorium was brought in effective for May 31, 2018. Since that, since that meeting, there has been movement within the state on two LDs that have, have provided a clearer picture for municipalities, and that's LD 1539 and LD 238. Both of those have passed. We'll be waiting for the timeline for the governor's veto, and then to see if there will be a potential override if, if the governor does veto those, those two LDs. What we'll do is, for a timeline for us and our work group, is that once that takes place and we know where we are with some guidelines from the state, then the marijuana work group will, will gear up and will start working on, on the language, and we'll, we'll do that. Probably by the 1st of August, we'll have our first meeting, we'll start ramping up with, start drafting our language for us. Eric, just as a brief update on what we've done internally as well.
So, internally, since the moratorium, we've really, we've not taken any action against any existing establishments. We've really tried to get a handle on what any existing establishments have for permits and licenses, and we can look at how the new rules apply to those as they, as they come online. We do have six establishments that we believe have been operating similar to or like a retail storefront, some of them with proper permits, some of them without, and we're kind of waiting to see where the rules fall before we take any, any further action on those. And then, we've also, based on the moratorium, will be denying any permits related to retail marijuana store, medical marijuana storefronts or social clubs.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments from the council to Chief Crowell and Mr. Cousins? None being, thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a, excuse me, a proclamation. Summer Learning Day. I'd like to read this off, and, you know, maybe, just maybe, maybe, could you come forward, please? I have to, I think we all need to recognize our Auburn Public Library Director here. I have, I'm constantly impressed with, and please pass this around, too, if you'd like to look at that, I only have two copies, but, I'm constantly impressed with what's going on with our library and the events. So, if you could, just give us a moment, and, you know, please, just kind of give us a little feedback on what this is.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to introduce to you, you know Sabrina already. This is Chris Shea. Chris represents the YWCA, the YMCA, I'm sorry. He represents the YMCA, which is also involved a lot in summer learning. So, there are a number of programs throughout the city that we'd like to recognize that do provide learning opportunities throughout the summer to help what we call prevent the summer slide, which is the children losing a portion of what they've learned throughout the school year and without, and then having them to go back to school without the same level of skills and having to do a lot of remediation. So, we've identified several organizations and programs within the city. We have summer opportunities at Edward Little High School. We have the Community Learning Center. We also have elementary opportunities through the school department. We have the YMCA and Literacy Volunteers, Promise Early Education Center, which is formerly known as Head Start, the Boys and Girls Club, the Auburn Rec Department, and our library. We also have Work With Me, which is a police department effort to ready at-risk youth for jobs, and the PAL Center. So, those are just, I'm sure it's not a complete list, but we wanted to make sure that they were recognized in conjunction with the Summer Learning Day. So, this is a national program where they ask each city or organization to do something so that there is a commemoration of the, of Summer Learning Day.
And historically, these have been successful, quantifiably successful?
All of the programs are very successful.
That's great, thank you. I'd like to read this proclamation. And whereas, "Summer Learning Day is a day to reflect on the importance of keeping youth learning safe and healthy every summer, ensuring their return to school in the fall, ready to succeed in the year ahead. And whereas, summer learning loss is a significant contributor to the achievement gap, a gap that remains constant during the nine months of the school year, but widens during the summer months. And whereas, summer learning programs are proven to maintain and advance students' academic and social growth, keep children safe and healthy during the summer, and send young people back to school ready to learn. Additionally, summer youth employment programs engage older youth in meaningful activities and allow them to explore careers of interest, take on new responsibilities, contribute to the community, and earn money for the future. And whereas, a wide array of public agencies, community-based organizations, schools, libraries, museums, recreational centers, camps, and businesses in our community contribute to the well-being of youth through summer programming. And whereas, summer learning is a critical component of our collective effort to ensure all students graduate from high school prepared for college, careers, and life. Now, therefore, I, Jason Leveque, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim July 12th, 2018, as Summer Learning Day in Auburn, Maine, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. And when this is whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause a great seal of the City of Auburn, Maine, to be affixed the 2nd day of July, 2018." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, open up the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on this agenda. I would ask that you state your name and address, and please limit your comments to around three minutes. Mr. Pelletier.
Is not on the agenda, does that include the workshop?
No, I don't think it does.
Larry Pelletier, 129 Second Street. I just wanted a few more points on the bells. My wife and I have lived in New Auburn since 1982, raised our boys there. We went to St. Louis Church. We renewed our vows after 10 years of marriage at St. Louis Church. And recently, when the Diocese of Portland decided that the church, they couldn't sustain it anymore, and for whatever reason, they were going, decided to have it demolished. And they had actually sold, or closely, were close to selling the bells to somebody out of state, a foundry or something. And a group of citizens banded together, and they were able to save the bells. We hired Cody Crane to take them out of the tower. And that is the first time that, that most of us had ever seen those bells. I don't think anybody, other than maybe somebody that worked at the, at the church or something, was up in the tower. But you have to, to see these bells to really appreciate them. So, if, if that group of folks hadn't taken the initiative to undertake, undertake this, this effort to save those bells, that we wouldn't be talking about this right now. So, there's a lot of history there, and they're absolutely beautiful. And if you get a chance, we'd like to get them in, in this building here, so that the folks can, from all over Auburn, can see them.
Maybe you can celebrate your next anniversary underneath the bells once again.
Yep, absolutely.
Anniversary park. I didn't think about that. Thank you very much, Mr. Pelletier. I, please, Mr. Martelli, one quick question to follow up on that. During our last meeting of the Bells Committee, there was conversation, and Mr. Cousins, maybe you could shed some light, about taking the smallest of the bells and placing it directly in front of the DS. Is that still a possibility? Has there been any further comment or conversation on that, as a reminder of what they are? And for those of you who haven't seen them, they're, they're very, very historical. They're built in the beginning of World War I, with the Germans beating down Paris's door in Paris, and then shipped to America. And I believe we have, that the only bells of its type is still here, correct?
There, as far as we know, these are the only bells from that foundry in France, a very famous foundry, other than the Liberty Bell replica in Augusta. Every state in the country has a bell from the same foundry as a Liberty Bell replica. We looked at moving one of the bells down here. We certainly still can move one down here. They're pretty dusty from being in storage, so we're looking at how to effectively clean one of them before bringing it down and make sure that we don't use a cleaner that will cause any damage, but we intend to move one down here.
Great. Thank you very much for that update. Mr. Martelli?
Stephen Martelli, 41 Broad Street, New Auburn. Saturday and Sunday, the 7th and 8th, at Big Lots. Big Lots is going to be doing a fundraiser for a couple of families in New Auburn. Santa will be there, and pictures of Santa and Mrs. Claus will be given out to all the children. So, come between 10:00 and 2:00 on Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you. Thank you. It's going to be a hot Santa. Any more comments from the public? I'll now close this open session. We're going to move on to unfinished business. We have a proposed ordinance amendment, ordinance 0406-182018, adopting the zoning change for Nisko-UNa Street. This is a second and final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. Second?
I have a motion from Councilor Hayes and a second from Councilor Fornier. Open up for public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? None being? I'll bring it back to the council. Council, any comments? Debate? Second reading?
We've had a lot of information, and it's been pretty thorough, so appreciate that.
I think the process here by city staff has been, has been thorough.
Yes, done a great job.
And the developer as well, so, you know, thanks to all parties involved. I'm going to ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Counselor Lasagna?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Titus.
No. I thought you were doing the, you know, this is the round, it's all right.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Poor Counselor Titus. Motion, Carrie, six to one. Okay, we have a few new, actually, we have a few board and committee appointments. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On order 5507-022-018, I would like to make the motion that the Auburn City Council hereby appoints, as nominated by the Appointment Committee, which met on 6/20/18, Dana, excuse me, Brian Carrier to the Planning Board as an associate member with a term expiration of 1, 1, excuse me, 2020. On order 5607-022-018, I would like to also make the motion that the Auburn City Council hereby, hereby appoints, as nominated by the Appointment Committee, which met on 6/20/18, Dana Staples as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term expiration of
Second?
I have a motion for Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Fornier. I'm hoping to up to the public for public comment at this point. None being, I would like, I do see Mr. Staples in the background. If you could please stand, and Mr. Carrier, are you here?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. First of all, before we, we vote on this, I will say thank you to both of you, very sincerely, for your effort to volunteer, or your willingness to volunteer to make Auburn just awesome. So, please conduct your jobs of the professionalism and thoroughness, if the council does vote for you. And again, thank you very much for, hopefully, maybe, your service, if the council does. With that said, do we have any debate on the council about these two nominees, scrupulous-looking fellows? None being, I'm going to ask for a vote. All those in favor? Oppose? No abstain? Passes, seven zero. Congratulations. Welcome to your sentence.
Congratulations.
Next is the renaming. Next is the renaming of the Little Andrisgoggin Park, otherwise known as Little Andy Park, to Anniversary Park to commemorate the Seska Centennial anniversary of the City of Auburn. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the order 57-07022018 in renaming Little Andrisgoggin Park to Auburn An- is Auburn Anniversary Park?
Oh, excuse me, Auburn Anniversary Park.
Auburn Anniversary Park to commemorate the Seska Centennial anniversary of the City of Auburn.
Second.
I have a second from Counselor, I have a motion from Counselor Fornier and a second from Counselor Walker. Open up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Ms. Myrick, anything else to add? Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the council for any discussion and debate. Comments, questions? No?
I have one, one point I wanted to make, though, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make sure we're in the reading that it is Auburn Anniversary Park, which the order doesn't read as right now, so that will be cleared up in the minutes. I noticed that the, the paperwork nomination informed, but the public record necessarily needs to reflect what we're actually voting for. Thank you.
Yeah, great, thank you. Counselor Hayes?
I do appreciate this evening, the presentation was good. I do appreciate that we had before us now an actual application for the renaming or naming. I am still bothered that we're taking it up without adequate public response to the application and following the full procedure of naming or renaming. And I, you know, I don't see the need for rushing, and I don't see the need for muscling this through this evening. I'd like to have a period of time for the public to react to the presentation that was made tonight and to hear some comment back with respect to a renaming from Little Andy Park, which we've for a long time kind of understood was the name, would be the name. So without providing that adequate time to get at least some comment back, I would not be voting in favor of, of the passage tonight. I will say too, that with respect to the presentation, you know, I do have my checkbook with me tonight, and we'll buy a brick. And I guess I found that much of the discussion was not associated to the renaming as much as to the actual bricks and the placement of those and the fundraising issue. So with that.
Well, Paul, I think we, we might have, just for time's sake, I think the, the anniversary could have been discussed as a little bit in more depth, but at this point, I think there was general consensus was how much more in depth on the word anniversary. And as far as protocol does go, there are some protocols governing the naming of public spaces after proper names, which would be highly contentious, I can think, and past history does prove so. But thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Hayes. Do we have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, was there, I, I know that there has been input from the city council whose district this is, whose ward this is, and also from the Seska Centennial Committee.
Say it three more times.
Seska Centennial, Seska Centennial, Seska Centennial.
Go, yeah, you got it, you got it.
Thank you. But, but was there other input? I mean, do you feel that there was adequate input on this?
We, obviously, we talked a lot, and I'll let Counselor Walker, because I had a lot of conversations early on with him as well, but the feedback from the Seska Centennial Committee was unanimous, and its support, as well as the bells committee as well, and general folks in the New Auburn area who we polled. The biggest question was, we'll make sure we save the, the rock and the plaque. And Counselor Walker, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I, I, I see the vision of the New Auburn area changing, and, and I think this is a great time for the name to come out there and spark for us and give us something in the future to really look at. Now, the, the Little Andy Park, when we named that a few years back, it, it was, it was chosen to be the Little Andy Park mostly because it sat, all of that sat on the Little Andrisgoggin. This park now, we're trying to make it look like we're really opening the whole park up so that the big river becomes part of this. And as we move forward in the future, I, I believe we will be moving down 136, and I'm hoping this name will continue to go right down the highway, and we will connect someday with Durham down at their park, which is not that far away. So I, I see the future of being something great for Auburn and the New Auburn area. And Little Andy Park itself will never go away. You'll have people still saying, "Let's go to the, the Little Andy," and that will mean the river and the boat launch will still be in that same area. There'll be some people that won't, you know, be happy with the change of the name, but this just is the right time, if we're gonna change any name, to do it now and to get used to it. And I, I think you'll see in 2019, this is gonna be something that's gonna be great in this city. And it, it's time for all of Auburn to come together and see this anniversary as something great, and New Auburn, you know, really feels that it's time for it to blossom. So I, I agree with the mayor, that this is a great opportunity for all of us, not just people that live in New Auburn. The whole city needs to really get sparked up about this. We've only got a short time, and it's time to come forward. And also, I will buy a brick, but I'll have to borrow the money from Mr. Hayes.
And just, and just remember, Counselor Hayes, we don't accept personal checks. So Visa, MasterCard, and maybe American Express. Okay, very good. Is there any other? Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week is an important week. It's, kicks off a big day in our history, the 4th of July. What better day to commemorate something big and fantastic than to kick off this campaign for this Centennial Park and to start your campaign for fundraising to promote it? Like you said, this won't come again. And what better way to kick off the grandest thing? You said you wanted to get these letters out this week. So let's get this kicked off right with the biggest bang we can do.
If there's no other comments, I'm gonna ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Counselor Lasagna?
Yes.
Counselor Hayes?
Abstain.
Counselor Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Fornier?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Anniversary Park passes by a vote of six, zero to one. Thank you. Moving on to the agenda. Wow, what time? Okay, reports. This might be the quickest report process in our history here. So we're gonna start off with my report. I'm gonna keep this pretty brief in the spirit of the whole evening. It's been a big night, a lot of work. I'm very excited about what's in store, but more importantly, right away, there's a couple of housekeeping issues. First of all, Independence Day is obviously Wednesday. I am asking and encouraging all Auburn residents to remember that we have a fireworks ordinance in this city that is not bendable. We do not have any free firework days or free fire zones in the City of Auburn, even on Independence Day. So please practice caution and care, and if there's something the council wants to take up before next Independence Day, well, maybe we can get that on the agenda. But as of right now, follow the law. That's one. Two, there's a couple announcements that are gonna happen in the near future, one of which is a potential upcoming trip to China, a trade mission with city staff and public officials. We're still putting that together. I believe it will happen sometime in September. Things are happening in Auburn. We're pretty excited about that. As we start talking more about details and scope of mission and attendees, we'll bring this out to the council for, for a look, and to keep, make sure you're all appraised of this. Third, we need to start mapping out the agenda for the city council for the next six to nine months. I'll be circulating a tentative list to start off the process, a brainstorming list, if you would, in collaboration with the city manager to all the councillors, so that you can add anything that you would like to see addressed, so we can properly schedule. A couple things that are going to be on the agenda coming up soon, and we'll take some serious deliberation in time in multiple meetings, would be our Agzone study, the results of the mayor's ad hoc commission. That will be happening, I believe, in two weeks at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. There'll be a lot of thought process going into this and afterwards, more importantly. We also have to look at our budget next year, processes. We need to start looking at what we have to do in order to plan for a better, smarter government, economic development, and then more importantly, and the last thing I'll leave you on, is education. I've asked the city manager to schedule a series of workshops, or at least sections of workshops, to go over economic principles, building blocks for a stronger Auburn, understanding our demographics, because demographics is destiny, and what we need to do to make sure the next 150 years, there's a theme going on here, next 150 years is as strong as the past 150 years, if not stronger. So it's gonna be a pretty busy six to nine months. So we'll be circulating this list hopefully out of the next week or two, so please give feedback and let's get it on. It's not a hard and fast list. It can be amended, it can be added on as things pop up, but it'll at least give us some guidance on directionally where we need to be going for good, proper timing, schedule maintenance, okay, or management. That's my report, thank you very much. Happy Independence Day to everybody in Auburn. Mr. Manager? I'm sorry, city councillors, start over here with Counselor Young.
Okay. Counselor Walker and Counselor Gary and I serve on the nomination committee for committees, and we want to encourage you all to know that these are certain openings that weren't filled tonight because we didn't have any applicants. And I'm encouraging you all to think of people in your wards and, that may fit the, the skill set that we need. So it's, we need to be recruiters, those of us that are on Facebook, share it with your Facebook friends. You may be surprised, somebody might be interested in some of these positions. They're posted every month. On the, I don't think there's any big secret about where the new Edward Little will be built, but now that we've got that big secret revealed, then we'll be able to report more of what's going on. And everybody wanted to know that big question. The work's not over, they say it's not gonna be completed until 2023, so I guess Counselor Lasagna and myself have signed on for a couple more terms. That's all the end of my report right now.
Is that how it works?
I guess that's what it is.
I, I will echo what Counselor Young said about the choosing of the, the location of the high school, and I think if anybody read the article in the paper, listened, it was a long, very well-thought-out, rigorous process for the placement of the high school, and I'm excited about the possibilities, considering also some of the schools that we looked at, of what, what we're gonna have in this community. That's it for me.
Have a airport board meeting Thursday night. Having been out to the airport this past week, if you wanna see what they answer, their constellations, you better get out there quick. They're on the move. They're, what was being assembled is now being disassembled and boxed up, and is moving out as well as the plane that's outside is gonna be, I believe, disassembled and moved. It'll be staying in the States but moving towards New York. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was very excited to hear the news of where Edward Little is going to be. I was hoping it was gonna stay there. I think it really, that's where it belongs, so I really do look forward to seeing the continued, the work in that committee. I did have a meeting with the Sewer Department and the Water District Committee, I mean, trustees, and the common thread there was, first of all, construction on Myatt Avenue has been going ahead of schedule. The State of Maine will now take over, I think it's the end of July somewhere, to start repaving, resurfacing. So they got their work done ahead of time, which also, they got a little bit for more than half of their projection, maybe quite a bit more than half of their projection for laying new pipe in the ground, which that can help, and that's quite a lot of area right there to do, plus other projects. But they are falling short a little bit in revenue, both in the sewer and the water department, in terms of actual gallons sold. So they're looking into that. One of the things they found that was one of our key users, commercial users, is Nestle, and they have installed some very sophisticated equipment to reduce their water needs, which turns out we'll be getting less revenue because they won't be using as much. Good thing, bad thing. Good thing they are conserving, bad thing, we're gonna have some revenue challenges going forward, we think. But besides that, I have nothing else to report.
Counselor Fornier?
There's really nothing to report, just our next library Board of Trustees meeting will be on the 18th of July, and we're, we will, it's not gonna be, oh, the next, the next month?
August.
August, excuse me, August. And the same thing with school, there's, there's nothing scheduled at this time, where there are two reports we'll be looking, one report that we're looking for is the parking situation around the library, so that's something that we'll be looking for, and the man, Mr. Manager Creighton will be heading that up and discussing that with us for various options out there to keep things green and find parking places, that kind of thing. The only other thing is the task force is done, and we don't meet again until fall, but I'm still awaiting news from the superintendent as to when mining the survey questions, when that's going to happen, because none of us have heard yet. But there's been some of us who have volunteered to help with that process of mining all of the, the questionnaires, the open-ended questions, so that we could, you know, disaggregate it and see what it tells us.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah, just a comment. The high school, I sure am glad that they're gonna rebuild the new high school right in the same area, but I have talked with many taxpayers that live in this city, and they felt that they shouldn't have been shut out to this point. Everyone kept saying, "Where are we gonna have the high school?" Many of them said, "It's gonna still be right where it is, it's just gonna be moved in another direction." And them that thought that are, in most cases, right, unless something changes in the next few weeks here in a hurry. But I, I agree with most of the people that said, "We should have been informed about at least the last two or three spots that were picked," so that people weren't just sitting on needles and threads wondering where and when was it gonna be picked and decided to come to, you know, Edward Little being right where it is. So I, I guess it's a great thing, but sometimes when you drag things out forever, it just seems like it's, it's not the right thing to always do with the taxpayers that are paying all the bills in this city.
Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 11th, the Lewiston Auburn Transit Committee will be meeting out to Abcog at 12:30 PM, and I'd like to kindly extend an invitation for the mayor, the good mayor to come out and sit into our meeting and possibly get any of the questions answered that he may have, and hopefully that will give him a clear understanding of L A T C. I've been on L A T C for about 15 years. I've been on the council, this is the start of my 13th year. So I know a lot about it, and it's not, it's not the city against them, it's not like an agency. We are L A T C, and right now, we have with the one more member. So it, we got one more person say. So for us to think that it's some other organization or committee out there that we have no control of, L A T C is about one of the only ones that we have clear control of with Lewiston, but I kindly like the input from the good mayor and from fellow councillors, but there's just so many things that my hands are tied due to circumstances. We try to work hard with what we have to make ends meet, we try to be frugal, and still meet the needs of all our riders. So I kindly would like the mayor to come out there so that he can get a better handle, because I don't want him to think that he suggests things and we blow him off. Some of the things- Some of the things that he should kindly suggest, we've probably already vented and tried, and it just isn't a fit.
I will, I put it on my calendar, I'll be there.
Thank you. Then, also the same night, we have a rec advisory meeting here at 6:30 PM in the bump out room, and both meetings, L A T C and the rec advisory is open to the public, so if anybody would like to come to either one or both of them, they're gladly invited to come.
Thank you very much. I'll just clear my schedule for you, Councilor Gary.
Mr. Mayor, can I have one more bite at the apple?
Yes.
Sorry, I mentioned, there was one thing I wanted to mention in my report, and I didn't, and one of the things that you mentioned, committees coming up and ideas and how we're going to, you know, bring items to the agenda is very important, but I just want to make it clear right now that I'm really going to push for this budget committee to come up that you've already suggested, but I'm also going to push for this council to make a direction early on, and I don't care for the next three months, what we're going to do next year. Look at the process, but then look at what we want to do next year, and maybe we can make a decision early enough so the staff has an idea of where we're heading to. So I'm going to be pushing for philosophical change and/or policy going forward early in the process.
Well, thank you for that. We're going to move to the city manager's report, Mr. Creighton.
Few comments, let me start off by talking about the capital improvement program at a council meeting probably a month ago or so, someone made a comment that, I just want to cut the record straight. For FY '17, the capital improvement expenditures were $5 million, $30,000, FY '18, 8.5 million. This year FY '19, about 8.4 million, I don't have the exact figure on that. Say it again.
Eight million, 375,000.
Thank you, eight million, 375,000. In terms of the L A T C, I also attend those meetings as a, as a member of the city of Auburn, and I appreciate what Councilor Gary was saying. There is a working group that has been established that I'm participating on, as well as Councilor Gary, and also Jody Dorisco, who's the executive assistant in the city manager's office. One of the things that we're looking at is there a way to partner with businesses in the community to not only help them meet their needs for our workforce, but also provide funding for the transit system. In addition, I know Anderson County's also been entertaining a proposal to provide funding as well, more of a regional effort, which I think, from my perspective, makes sense. I do think that transit is important to the community, and that we should be looking at that closely and not taking it for granted. Terms of the selection process for the location of the high school, I appreciate what Councilor Walker had to say, and two councilors here who sit on that school building committee, as well as myself, as a, as a staff member from the city, that has been an interesting, long process, much of which is dictated or determined by the Department of Education in terms of how that process works. We started off looking at over 40 properties, and I thought to myself, there must be a number of properties where that new high school could be located, and the end boiled down to where we are now, the existing site. I am looking forward to the next phase of it, and looking forward to the, what I call, I guess, the education specification phase, where we're going to talk about what is going to be happening inside the walls of the high school. And I think that's really important to the future of education in, in the city. Also, I want to mention and recognize Police Chief Phil Crowell, who will be the acting city manager, beginning tomorrow through the end of the week, I'll be back on Monday. So I have great confidence in Chief Crowell and the team that we have here. I'll be on vacation. I also want to mention the Legislative Policy Committee for the Maine Municipal Association is an important committee for the MMA on legislation having to do with a myriad of bills, and there is an opportunity for a writing candidate from the city of Auburn. The other communities, Minnetonka, Poland, Mechanic Falls, and Gloucester did not submit anyone for this position. We already have one voting member, who happens to be Mayor Levesque, this is an opportunity for us to have another voting member. I don't know if there are any councilors that would have an interest in that, if they're not, I would offer myself up. I think it's important to have the two votes, I know the city of Lewiston has two votes, we only have one at this point, this would give us a second one. So I just mentioned that you'd let the mayor know if you have an interest, or if you're okay with me being that person, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Moving on, this is our last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on the agenda. But I see, state your name and address, and leave me your remarks for three minutes, is there anybody who would like to speak? None being, okay. I'll now close the open session. Next is an executive session on a poverty, can we do it right now?
Sabrina.
Listen to that, okay. Yeah, you can come up. So before we go into executive session, we're going to reconvene our workshop for a moment. So Ms. Best, no, thank you for your time, I was going to put her at the end.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sabrina Best, Recreation Director, with me is Dana Staples, he is the Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. It is, staff is requesting that we amend the ordinance for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board in regards to the language in section 2-454, under the Establishment Membership Section B. Currently, this part of the ordinance states that of the seven appointed members for the board, there cannot be more than two from the same ward. What that has created is a difficulty in filling all the board members. Back in 2006, we reestablished this advisory board, and since then, we have struggled to have full membership. Oftentimes, we have a lot of residents that are eager to volunteer and be a part of something and give back, and we are unable to appoint them because of this restriction, so we are requesting that we eliminate that language to open up the, the full membership to any resident of Auburn.
Thank you for that. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Lasagna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also wonder if in the future we consider this, can consider this in terms of other committees? I'm just going to put that out there.
No, no, I would agree, this is part of the agenda of reviewing and workshopping all of our committees. I do believe this is not a universally applied rule to our other standing committees, it's interesting, there's some incongruities, I think, with the makeup and of our, of our varied committees, so I think this brings us more in line, am I wrong? This brings us more in line with the proper operating procedures of our other committees? Okay.
Our other, other committees have that rule, all right? There are many other committees that have that same rule, this would be going against what is normal.
No, that's not true at all.
No?
There's only maybe one, and that's the planning board.
City Clerk?
Actually, I don't even think there's a ward requirement for the planning board. I know the Appointment Committee tries to take that into consideration, they try to look at ward representation, but as far as I know, it's only the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that has that in their ordinance, and I'm not aware of it being in any of the, the other bylaws either.
My understanding was that it was on some other committees, am I wrong, Councilor Gary?
We haven't, to be truthful, we have not sat down and gone through all the others to see if there's any other stipulations, so we don't know for fact if we violated any other rules for any other appointments of committees.
That would be one of the first orders of business for us, is to put that on there, review that and see what's...
Yeah, that, absolutely, we, that's going to be on, we talked about doing a full committee workshop.
Needs to be consistent.
This is, well, this is an important first step, I think, and to add conformity, and we really do need to get these positions filled, I mean, it's a part for the citizens of Auburn.
May I ask a question through the chair to the city clerk?
Absolutely.
Sue, could you find out any reference to why it says that you can't have more than two per ward on the rec advisory board?
I went back in, back to the minutes, because the ordinance is dated back to 1967, and there wasn't anything in there, but I believe you, you gave a brief explanation as far as what you knew to be the case.
From the information that I've gathered, it, it sounded as if the goal was to try and avoid all the members being from one ward, and therefore, that one ward getting more of the benefits or, or resources that could be established. I think it, it sounds as if the Appointment Committee is the one that really should be taking on that, you know, recognition of having equal memberships across the wards, but we've, you know, this past time, we had three people apply, we couldn't nominate, the time before, we had six people apply, we could only nominate one of them, we had two vacant, so it's been a consistent issue.
Going, going back many years, and, and I was around just shortly after they put that into effect, the Parks and Recreation Department had a lot of strength. When you had big housing developments that were coming in here and they wanted to build, we'll, we'll pick on Taylor, Taylor Pond area, the Parks and Recreation Department actually was, was a stronghold on, they would have to either give you money or recreation area built along with 11 houses, or seven houses, or 25 houses, and that is pretty much why that was put into effect then, because they didn't want that part of Auburn having all the power, or South Auburn having all the power, so they made sure, and that's been, I don't know how it got stripped out of people coming in and choosing to cluster, you know, properties and homes, but it was just somehow taken away, and that was put into effect back, way back then, and part of that was under Eric Hudson's job title and stuff, which goes back a long time ago, but, but that was really the reason, so that different wards didn't have the power to be able to say, you know, if you come and build in our place, we can have a lot more playgrounds, and, and it was, it was politicians at work, that's what it was.
I think it was changed two direct, uh, park and rec directors ago, back when Bushway was still here, that was still in effect, where they, a developer had to either give a part of land for recreation, or give some sort of money to help go towards a city-owned facility where their tenants or other Auburn residents could go to participate, and I'm not sure where it is now in the ordinance for land development.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we're going to adjourn the workshop and get back to executive session. This will, I believe, come to a vote, and it'll be drafted up in our next meeting, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Yes, so we do have a couple of weeks, and I do believe it has to go through two readings, two votes, so I could be wrong on that though. But thank you very much, both of you. Okay, we're going to leave workshop, come back to executive session. Poverty abatement case number 2018-002 pursuant to 36 MRSA, section 841, with possible action to follow. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Walker, second from Councilor Forney, all those in favor, by voice vote, vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstaining, none being, we're in executive session. All those opposed, abstaining, non-being, we're in executive session. (applause) I'm gonna get Counsel Walker to do a little kerchief, little pocket squares.
Nice. Yes, I like that.
I think we're gonna, Counsel Walker and I, we're gonna start dressing up.
Yeah, make it look like a very elite.
Yeah, wear the hat.
Okay, we're on air.
Thank you.
I declare the council out of executive session. I'm gonna wait a second for the clerk to get back. At this point, I'll entertain any additional motions before adjournment.
I would like to make a motion for order 58-07022018 that the city council hereby grants an abatement in the amount of $2,342.68 for case number 2018-002 in accordance to Title 36 MRSA Section 841, Section 2.
Second.
I have a motion for Counsel Fornier and a second for Counsel Gary. At this point, I'll open up to the council for discussion. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Obstain? Motion passes 511. I want you to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion for Counsel Fornier, a second for Counsel Walker. All those in favor of adjourning by voice vote, please say aye.
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 You tricked us again.
I did, never anticipate my commands. This meeting is adjourned.